Alright, everyone. Public Doorrests 42. Alright. Excuse me. You need to have an executive session tonight. And that will be in the. Any other amendments for the agenda? And I'm going to go. All those favorite. Any opposed? Don't you care if general public comments on a key one? Wish to speak tonight? Heather? Go ahead, whatever you read, review it.
I was reading the warning for the school budget. And I don't think that it's clear to the voter. What the circumstances of the total budget are. The way that it reads, it almost makes one think that the budget is increasing 7.2%. When what is actually happening is. Much different than that and is more a reflection of. The student population year over year. Due to presumed decrease in the student population.
Budget is up. Bad amount, so I mean, the warning doesn't accurately reflect the budget as it stands. And that is prior to Act 42, which was just signed by the governor. That was statutory language. The only thing that we do is input the numbers. But it does accurately reflect the budget is up, expenses up, education spending is up for pupil. Those percentages that are reflected in the warning.
I guess my, I guess my point is that it is a function of the number of students in the school population. And that is not clearly spelled out.
Okay. Is that everything, Heather? Alright, did anyone else wish to speak tonight? Alright. Thank you for the comments, Heather. Alright, we want to the consent agenda. First of all, with the. Anything in the consent agenda that the next question about? Alright. Issues, the. Contract recommendations. There were contract recommendations that were sent out. After this. Both were for both administrators. So. I guess we'll leave that. Clear before we set agenda. Did anyone receive that or review that? If you'd look through our motion to approve the consent agenda. How many examples? All those favor, say no. Any opposed? Sorry, let's do it.
I vote in favor. Sorry, I didn't get to the mute button in time.
Senator, yes. Okay, I'll try to turn here. I obviously did a lot in here about things. First part, those are four, they're day or night states. Line that deep. We also need to get some data from Pmart first. The annual report, the council, all that. Do you care about what the president said about to the people? And those for weeks. We have a brochure with a new feature talk on the day. Supposedly have file language. On page one side of the table. It's been done like. We are finalizing our PowerPoint presentation. I spoke in the other past, past, we know that. We usually would pay TV around a pandemic and sit around at a round table and then kind of discuss. Talk about this, found that it's much more efficient in our times. Three, four, our best is with slides. And that's together for a specific task, right? And we showed that things can be. Our goal is to have this wrapped up in a position by the middle of the next week. And then we set off the TV that he got it's plenty to insert show. Well, I'll take. Say I let them look for that, on that period. I'll be. Strange, but I love that. That's so sound and it can give a lot of slides at the same time. We kind of analyze. Talk about us. Well, it's very good, very good. Carol, that's what we're talking about. The mid-year assessments have been completed. What are our inclusion government losses? So these are where finalized maps, there's no way to talk with Eric. Prior to this, our goal would be to make the part four be that people have a presentation. Or part of the public of our meeting session throughout these mid-year assessments. With our better stuff, number first, that's what I feel like being so love. Can't go on top of anything, you're probably on growth. They're all Twitter, multiple Twitter. I hope they'll also come and take a look at. For the information, share here on MTSS. So the nice correlation between the assessment, if it went in. Well, certainly Bob was what you see, I assume. Talk about that to be in March. I know that. Particularly March, three order, but. Forty-four times payback. I think. We also, this is asked, we start to get more question on. The assessment that's what are in place there, yes. Off the two act, Africa is a big cap, PTC. So basically, for that, for months. Comprehensive assessment program. So we're starting to learn about that. One look like, unless we have a little more information, you can share that with our staff. Our administration, well, of course, of course. Better explain about what it looks. Obviously, maybe how the assessment looks like. What we've been told that there are a lot of similarities to. Yes, back, but. Now, see this, and I think a lot of them understand what's called web and that knowledge. Which basically has a scale type of question. So as we look at a standard, there are lots of state assessing that, say, level three, a level four. No, as Carol and her staff over to do that, to look at that online. Our assessables of the NCD, we're in classes. Therefore, to replicate, we'll take a scheme all those steps. So that's a better measure of it, so. It'll gain to use in other states, other assessments. They really last term, but it was on the plus of the area. Well, that's one of the issues, I think, of assessment orders. Stand and cover it, and talk about it, ask, okay, the assessment, but where did they go? Ask that way, okay. What the scheme is looking for on assessments this way. With a much clearer answer to what that looks like in our state assessment. I'd like to help the work, make sure that. A couple of things, let's say about these, not a lot, so really, I like. You anticipate a busy legislative season, but right now, I know that. You can see that from. The others. That's the problem. So a lot of new members, both the House and the Senate. There are a lot of new bills being introduced that are currently discussion at the committee level. We are seeing some hints about job care programming, every school programming. So our programming, obviously, safety, smiden, that one takes precedence this year. But you never know during the legislative session, what may pop up. So it's something that Eric could close. I don't, we do know that Act 42 has been passed and really. Really things to us, like if we. Till 2024, July 1st, 2024, yes. Which we do not have to designate a physical location for a board meeting, for a committee meeting. And I know that's something which our boards have all gone back to have a physical location. Whether we look at, say, engagement or facilities spending or things along those lines, or policy spending to the state level. We can, you know, keep those as per people. What kind of needs to work on some. And it's for also a lot of creative participation. And then I know Heather talked about before about the issues of the language around. You know, the budget language. As Lewis has stated, that is by statute, there is specific language that all schools have to use. In Act 42, they are looking to signal a shift. But I talked with our, our S U attorney, I'm still able. He had informed us that we were fine with continuing with our, with the length that we currently have in our reporting, the game in the past. We won't be looking at making a shift to the date line which next year. But we thought that trying to change, change the last plan might be more problematic. So. So. The view I have is that the fact that you can see that really, it does. But it just basically tells the whole budget, that's it all, so it takes out for people expenditure and other items. There's some other reasons for that, which I don't get it. One last thing. Is in February, this February, the legislature is going to pass a resolution. Declaring February as school board recognition. And so I know that the board does a lot with teacher appreciation. They also go bug down, make sure that their staff, teachers feel recognized. Here, and I think that's as state is looking at the. School board members thank this decision, that's it. So probably that's one where they do a great job and don't send anything, but if there's one slip up. Everyone in town, hold on, don't bother, it's a, it'll be, you know. Die, or, you know, just going around and bounce, or really, there's no place to get away. But I just personally want to say on behalf of Wellspring and staff members, just to thank each one of the board members for their. Their time, dedication, and commitment. As many of the public does not know, it's not just kids that show up here speeding, and that's it. There's a lot of work and stuff behind the scenes, including individuals, a lot of discussions, lots of tears, so. I just personally, I love the ones that just thank each one of them. Dedication, I know that there's a little bit specific, which you can frame it. Okay, I'm, I'm, so I have your side of the house.
Right on.
No, but I just want to love to say that, you know, yeah, I'm. It's like, so people, because of that meeting is so harsh, by that time, they will. Go back. And that time to go back to Congress.
Yes.
One level out of the gear.
Of course, it's the smallest one.
Yeah.
They feel the difference.
May I keep here, one year?
Yeah, I just have that for you.
Alright, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about assessments. I haven't heard of the D cap. But what about like the other one, like? Prognia, I've heard of.
So, so Prognia is statewide assessment is what the point would be, but. I guess back down to even some, what they're stating refer to, I think, police matters, which I did not know this until exactly that. Then it's what we call. On, maybe comprehensive assessment program, which will be the content assessment, which we talked about. We have local assessments in place, right now we have Sabre, we have Bass Bridge, we have M.A.S.T. We are looking at. We understand that there's a lot of local assessments going on, a lot of that's going because of the recovery plan. It is dedicated, if we need funding, you know, state's asked just that. We do not want to get into just a testing call for assessment, we understand it's a lot, a lot, so. We are, you know, next year, we'll look at scaling that. See where it, you know. One, maybe went to a Bass Bridge, and then went to a MAP. And both are a little, you know, a little bit different, I think that's the, or that's one. When Lisa has, since she's talking more about that, you know. Part of her, her views on the assessment piece, they both are valid, they both provide a lot of information for us. I personally like that because it really do the charts for them, really just better understand. When it gets right, it'll be, you know, be in New York, end of year, from last winter to this, this winter. Helps adjust the curriculum and the lessons, the whole life of them. We, we do know that we have a lot of local assessments in place this year, we are going to scale that back. As we start to move into most pandemically. So just, I know that there have been some frustration, family. About Sabre, the Bass Bridge, the map, that we are, we are, they're aware of that. And we are going to adjust that for them. Being said, a lot of that was, we had one data states, as part of the recovery plan and most of that. That's what we've done for months ago.
Any, any question?
Yeah, a question. So Act 42, I was excited about. Article one, which you shared. The new ballot. That's. We have an option to use that this year, if we.
No, we've already poured our language back, and that was what, when we talked about, we had 49 in place. In sergeant said, oh, so we really, you have, you know, 23, 24, there is a slow allowance. So districts, right? What specifically will it say is 2025, we're here that all districts will be expected to use that.
Okay.
But when I spoke with them, and most I spoke with them about this. It really was, we had this language in place and make a drop shift, where anyway, we have the best thing, so. We, you know, stay within the current language, the next year will make adjustments.
Was it, I think, I mean. If we want the best shot of passing the budget, I, I agree with. I think what Heather mentioned earlier is, if you look at the current warning with the percentage in a dollar amount. That's me, an unafford, if I'm an unafford voter, and look at that, say, oh, this is going up. This is competing. And maybe I don't have kids in the system, or what, whatnot, I opened up, you know, potentially. But if we, if it's just strictly the dollar amount that's written here, without that scary percentage. I think that that's more valid.
Well, Matt, I think one of the concerns on this side of not transparency. People still enter, we're being less transparent.
True.
That we're just trying to hide numbers, so we just put up one number that people don't get a full picture of that. We're misleading them, they vote, they may vote something, they don't, they're staying, so I think. There'd be two sides to that discussion, and I think for us is. This will prove that we really passed on 25, we have warned it, slide about 24. I found 26, we already have things out, out, ready to go, so we had signatures. And that's what it said, you know. I will get the governor Scott, he's reluctant to do this, but. We had, it would be a decision, we're going to stay in slide, which of course we won't support that, encourage us. To stay with this slide, but this year, and then ship next year, so. And I just.
So next year will be less transparent.
Next year will be following the language as we're in.
Okay.
Right, there's some people who will like, so they won't.
Yeah, right.
And I think, you make a good point, that, I think is where. You know, it's just also not communicating how one has worked, except providing, it's very confusing, they'll go. It's better to drop our tactics, well, it just all happens.
Right.
You know, that, so I think that's just it, how to be, you will say that. Many times, how to be the best job that is, just common sense, like, oh, we spend more, well, then, correct. It works, to me, others, which is not true. So.
I mean, if it's just me signing another warrant, I'm okay with doing it, if that's just the barrier of. Changing the language, but I think for the best shot of passing, I think this is better language.
Okay, I think we've, it's been warned already, that's why.
Yeah, that's why we had to meet in January, because we had a deadline. So the warning has gone out, the county has warned.
You can't have another, you can't have a second warning.
No.
It's, it's.
We could, we'd have a second one, but really, it's not being welcome.
Okay.
And I think that brochure too, like, will help. I think we have the correct information in our brochure, and those that are interested, read the brochure, and feel like. Around the language, those questions should be answered, but in that, if we, if we do it right.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with that too, I just, I saw it as a match, you know, to our case, and I'm, I'm looking to leverage everything.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I think that's. I, I, you know, I, I agree with you, I think it helps. We always look at how we're going to make sure that's, committee members stand with the budget, isn't what we're going to. And, and that's problems that. And. You know, we're still trying to work on that, so I think if we shift the language, I think next year, then we can. Will look at this and say, okay, that sets around the plan, we, where's this up? I think each year, we're going to have to look at how to be. A better job for the reach our, our, in our government, really looking on. Let that, let it impact that easier.
Yeah, the. The issue with, with the warning too, there's, there's multiple elements to this too, because it's written in statute, like. Can't post it, you know. No later, no sooner than 30 days, you know, later than 40 days before your meeting. And so that's why we always have, like, you know, sometimes kind of a crunch, and then.
And we were looking, and another thing is, we had to work with clerks each time. Clerks have to be there, doctors, bridge, so, and that's, they're the ones that tried to push us, and push us, starting with January. We're getting almost, like, hey, we need this now, to be a bridge, so there are a lot of forces that are, of course, and that's what many believe.
Yeah.
Was frustrated, we talked about the, the timing of this, you know, H42. And things that, when I spoke with Chris about this, and there was any chance that, early on, he didn't believe that, whoever's got to be important. It's not all. So, you know, but obviously, that changed, so. You know, it was last, but then some people have, you know. You know, but like I said, we talked to Chris about it, Chris felt that we were only able to support this language, but the things. So, but I actually, I was just saying, and, and, and I do think. That, you know, the perfect expenditure, the way it's done, it appears there's a lot of food sometimes. Around, some of these numbers don't bear the truth.
Yeah, the 7.5% is a good, because it disentertains to the, the increase in cost for equalizing pupil education, but. The actual budget itself is only up. Like 6.8%, something like that, so there is a difference between how much the budget increased. With equalizing pupil, so. I can see where it can look worse than it actually is. If I compared it to other years. I think it's. That bad.
Alright. Any other questions for the superintendent? Alright, principal reports. I have, I'm also in school. So, well, my thoughts on the Act is five things I want to highlight. We are in January and spent a lot of time this month working on the. Bass Bridge and M.A.S.T., I want to give. Credit to all the workers that produce it up, getting to your point. Looking at the data that is. I feel very good about once we pack in the classroom, and go back to the multiyear system, support, engagement, education, sport, women's, women's, overhead, and every piece. Looking at student data, having conversations about supporting all students, so I give credit to the staff, and. I'm excited that. I'm hoping we can share some information, and then close. Because we are responsible, you know, in the small, in the second session. Credit to the staff, and a lot of the mixed over, and I'm very excited about the MTS system, and. And those are all things to change in here, but I think things moving in the right direction, so. Proud of the work, if we could have a. Teachers that wouldn't have any head services come up, actually, I do anticipate. And so the PLCs, and the credit to compensation, but. Indicators, the instructional practice, some of the work that's coming up, the head services coming up, so. It is very valid, time being spent. For the benefits of students. Proud of the admin team, Rick, I enjoy our provision of student learning, and I think one thing. That sticks out to me, if you're talking about is joyful learning, and I'd like to think that the focus is happening, both schools create that joyful, joyful learning. We had a, a second all-school celebration day, we actually tied it in to global play day. Research is showing that kids are not playing, not spending that time, having the time to. To interact, to share, work out some skills. Which I could videotape, videotape the whole day, it was just a wonderful experience. Seeing the kids bring in different games, they were not like products. Sharing, working out differences, and this is what the kids need. This transfer is always a positive, joyful learning, I can't say enough. That the day we spent on this global play day is, is worth the value. And this afternoon, we had a second all-school celebration for positive behavior events, sports. We tied that into an outside slide. We gave the kids cardboard, and the kids split up into groups that they wanted to split up. They made splits out of cardboard, and we had categories, there wasn't so much a race, it was just. It was live down the hill, we had the best, the burning. Burning term, the most innovative, most successful, so it was just amazing. It, it feels good to add to that, that environment.
Just, I got a message that some folks who are on the call virtually weren't able to hear Rick or Chris very well. I could hear Rick fine, but Chris was a little garbled, but I don't know if there's any microphone, you can move closer to that end of the table. Matt and Eric.
And. We have started our predispose program, I want to give credit to FFT, that's helped us with it, all schools can participate. Choose between skiing, snowboarding, and. Once again, a great program. It's creating that collaboration, and the kids are getting the experience, excitement, and. Once again, a half, a half day at the mountain, and it transfers that, that positive learning climate to the kids. So. Yeah, so those are the big things. Say, a question.
Yeah. I just want to say, my daughter came back from today, loved the, the exercise you guys did, and. The joyful learning, as you, as you put it, the importance of it. I, I recall talking to a teacher. Who mentioned that there, there seems to be less time for that in the curriculum, that there are. Requirements, for example. Time in front of a laptop to do one exercise. I know my daughter's in front of a laptop, for Lexia and that Dreambox. You know, that could be 10 minutes, 15 minutes of play activity. Is there, and this could be, this is could be tabled for a future discussion, but is there, is there. I felt that the teacher was restricted and wanted the teacher to teach, but the time the teacher had. The teacher expressed that teacher couldn't have those times for play. And because of the curriculum, that's sort of forced. Is that, is that a thing? They can be done, or?
I think we're, as teachers, the staff, they're trying to move the, the students ahead. Sports, I mean, things that we have as options. To, to help that academic, so maybe it's, it's, you need to figure out some time to get those, those. You know, experiences that add to the joy of working during the day, but. As, as teachers, you know, a lot of the residents can, you know, go with that. Our data, and how we move, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces to them, and it's more than just the academics, the social, emotional. All those pieces have to, have to play in, but I think you, yes, the, the education, sport team, that's how we. look at the whole school. So with Matt, I would encourage you, um I know you wear two hats, but also I would encourage those teachers to reach out to you and speak to you very about the curricula and the concerns or the piece of ass.
Okay.
Because I think, you know, it drew about autonomy. Uh it threw that restrictive. I I I do know the the concept of the more playtime, uh what that really means, it is, it's very subjective. Uh playtime will on and we're not trying to, we're not looking to increase amount of times in screens as we sit here. We have people on screens here in screen, which is kind of try to picture what we're talking about. Again, we have a screen set where I'm looking at a screen and looking at another screen.
I'm different.
Well, I understand that for us as well. Yeah, I've been like five, twelve years on that. Right. So basically, we're, first is about you. Uh but I think we, you know, that's something where it's there are concerns and something which we are addressing about. Uh but if there's a teacher who feels that that's a good question for, should go write to Rick.
Okay.
Uh and then discuss what that is. It just might be just interpretation of what that teacher, these expectations are for what their classes. Uh teachers have, we think there are standards there, you know, that they have the freedom to adjust. Uh you know, they're learning based on these standards. It's supposed to back to, you know, math or any other stuff. Looking for growth and you know, teachers at the time, I think, there are certain programs, whether in donations or less, I think, they have to do, but uh there are things where uh they have to put for a couple of quotes. But like I said, not knowing these situations, scenario, unless I think whatever in here, uh I can just tell what they're being restricted. They won't play. And you know, like I said, that just depends on how that looks like. I think if there is something there to say, I think play is great, but my my shit's out learning, you know, the fellow is, so there's that there's that balance.
I think it's a the big topic that we can't cover right now, but.
Well, I I think it's one, right. I think it's for S U and right. I think there's, you know, really what that looks like. And I think that's part of the discussion, but it's exactly a teacher specific thing. And so I'm not going to really discuss an issue why issue over one teacher concern, but I think that's where uh we would encourage teachers to directly address the fellow question. Uh that's where the appropriate change is, is to talk to your students or just ask them. He brought in a more where Rick since he's defending himself, uh so.
Oh, right. No, no, I I guess that's the requirement that we'll do in Lexia or something.
Uh I'm open for conversations.
Okay, great.
And just to play the purpose, I mean, it's these world play days, it's all the world, Carol is, Carol talked about it. Ran into it, just ran across it on my teacher on Sunday. Uh but it really is about we're not talking play. Just it it was an end result that play today. Um where everyone to move the socio-emotional collaboration of kids working together. That is the end goal. And uh it was exciting to see kids work together, normally don't work together, play together and work out those those differences and as staff, we come set back to let the kids have those interactions and work on those skills that I think last two, three years we missed that. So it was exciting and exciting to see. So when I talk with Carol, she gets a chance.
Um, it's kind of a quick question. Uh and I I think I had asked folks before, but could you interested in knowing more about the the student council? That you have, this is the student council will sponsor. Now, is that like students?
Which 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 one?
Student council, Middletown Springs Student Council, yes, for students.
So the student council is organizing them there. Yeah, so they're they set the date, got the DJ. Uh so yeah, I mean, it's a community that's open to all the students, so.
That's what I was getting at. It consists of uh like a bunch of students, any students, all students?
It's also three K through six, parents invited. They wear a rank, they pay for DJ. Which is a nice, that ties into parent connection and and the value of dance at home. But once again, expressive ways that the kids can can feel good about themselves.
All right. Yeah, I just was a cheerleader. What was uh biggest uh like a group of students that have given responsibilities in school, I believe, a lot of it.
Well, so it has meets once a week when they they come up with plans, uh what they want to do, that is one of the activities that they they want them to to have as an opportunity for the students. So.
It sounds great. With any other comments or or advice?
Is this, has there been any discussion around well students joining middle town and middle town students joining wells or any of these opportunities, whether it be playing or the music that's playing today or any kind of?
We haven't had that quite. I mean, that's something to think about. Yeah, but yeah.
There's no, you have the ends here coming up too. Sure. How are those areas that started?
Carol?
Um I would, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the R T S S and B S T as well, because we just finished that. I know in March, we're going to talk about the data, but we're seeing some really great improvement. And I think part of that is coming from the structure of having the R T S S model and Ashley being able to meet for two hours once a week and B S T ability. And look and look really deeper into what students need and specifically addressing the gaps that they have and providing the proper interventions. It's really starting to show that it was a really great department, where the S U could have that going to place. We are going to be doing on Friday, I'm here then local late and you couldn't do it today. We have some coming in. So uh one of our teachers suggested that we look at the passports that were handed out. So we'll be doing. We were planning entering some outdoor activities, but I'm not sure the weather's going ready, so we may have to change that. We might actually move it up till next week so that we can be outside of some of that. We had a family engagement activity last week. We did an escape room that uh we learned a lot from and it's coming to middle town spring. And I think that one of the things that middle town will benefit from is some of the little glitches we had here. So I'm kind of going to be interested to hear what happens. We we had a decent turnout. We had, I think, eight families that came. Uh so it's going to be interesting to see what happens in middle town on the actions to care for how everything goes there. It's it's a really great idea and I think it needed more time, yeah, but um we had a couple of important efforts that were there. It was a challenge. Uh also, the other thing that we've been working a lot on is looking at the data that we gathered from our school culture survey and we're working right now with upward learning. And just kind of having students get some input and react to and analyze the data that we got back from that. So that will be interesting. We'll share kind of what kind of weather meeting. Um and just I'm gonna let you know that Joy Ray, who are some great teachers, wanting to be starting the student council in the second half of the year. Uh we're starting the process of identifying students in grade that will represent third grade level and she's just kind of getting out back in global again. So we're kind of excited about that.
Any questions?
If it's not really a question, we don't care. Uh is this global learning, we're considering you are in Friday? Well, I don't know if it's, I don't know if we're working. I think this is on Friday, it's on Friday. But um I had to see, I had to see if they would be there, but whatever they can, I think, I think we can.
It's probably, it's post-dedinal, it's likely, but it's probably going to be next week. I don't think. We want to make it so that it can be outdoor component and I don't think that will happen. I just know it probably will.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to finance. Uh so the tactic was budget forecast or spend for past for the current school year. What I do that I look at our budget compared to our actual expenditures. Forecast where we're going to end the year based on current staff, you know, we set the budget over a year in advance. From from when the next year actually ends. So a lot of change, employees change at the beginning of the year, health benefits change periodically. Um so I look at current staff, take current benefits and see where that falls as our budget. For at this time of year, were any expenditures like supplies, G P, professional development that are not contracted, where we don't have set amounts for the year? Uh if we have not exceeded budget, I keep those amounts at budget, uh just because we still have a happy year left to use that money. Um anything, anybody said overspent, I change the forecast numbers of current staff. Uh so based on my current forecast, I'm estimating that we're pretty close for a year this year. We have a small surplus of about five thousand dollars. Um we still have a lot of year left. We, like I said, we do have some line that still have money left in that because they're still at budget. But I I think at this point, we really start to look, need to be cautious with our spending for the major of the year. Uh we can freeze the budget, but just have um the administrators aware of where we're currently standing and and just be cautious with additional spending in the near years. We don't want to end in a deficit position. Uh we will that affect our bottom of year budget, um because we will be ending with zero revenue start first, what we used in this current year budget. Uh but we will also have to make up whatever deficit we have. So we definitely want to end in a surplus position and I will continue to keep an eye on it, work with the administrators for the remainder of the year. Any questions?
Well, I have one question on page four of the expenditure report, well, it's transportation. We had fifteen hundred budget and what we spent, nineteen eighty-six, three.
Uh so that is that the extra, that's the energy break order? So that would be there, extracurricular transportation. Okay, uh so that's not too informed school. That'll be field trips. And and I believe they use some of that past summer and field trips as a third rate piece. That's the one applying already. We've exceeded budget, so we're using that number for for our forecast number. And and so they're going to be cautious the rest of the year. If there's a field trip in plan, they're going to need to stand, it's going to hit that line. They should look and see what, where they have money in other lines that they can not spend.
Thank you. Possible that uh I don't remember the word like or as her, but uh use as her bonds for like for activities with that kind of work that like should that kind of.
Uh I think at yes, there comes, we've been spending based on S U initiatives and making sure that we we're going to use the money for offset enrichment, that we make that available to all schools. So that would be have to be a special, we probably have money to do for well, some of the programming. Well, that is, we could put some money aside, we're splitting it from the world for five scripts. To help one thousand prior in a period of years. So discussions like that, I think, lots of issue love, this is good, we'll go on, always. Uh TV that nothing, I think, you may be thirty, but not a grand thing. Or maybe say, you're putting that in, you're already got. Mark's unfinished business. Uh up for the classroom. So I have invited Ashley here tonight again to uh talk about the an up for a classroom where we left off. Basically, uh where uh the sign and any other relevant information. So uh, go ahead.
Hi. I sent a picture of the current drawing to Eric via email. I know Eric, were you able to share that with other folks on the board?
I have had it shared. It's uh by.
Am I able to screen share?
Maybe able to.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to do that just so y'all can see. Uh wait, no, that's not logically savvy. So um all right, that's going to be a little bit more, but the drawing that we currently have essentially looks like um sugar house without sides. It's just a post and beam structure. We discussed working in round with the wood, meaning that the post would be a round locust that will be able to harvest locally. We worked with Michael Beatty, who is a Middletown Springs resident, um used to teach up at Green Mountain College. He is an architect, so he did our design for us. Uh the footprint is ten feet by thirty feet. Green Mountain timber frames have graciously volunteered to do the actual frame piece work so that we'll be able to put it up like a post and beam. I am waiting for um uh sorry, brain isn't working. Uh I I've reached out to Phil's Mills to find out what um the lumber would cost um to put the structure together. Uh my husband is researching helical piers, um which are these giant, not giant, but they're instead of using concrete footings, it's a screw-in footing, uh which is more conducive to outdoor building in places like New England um for structures like this, so that they're able to to kind of freeze and thaw without having shifting happening. So we're we're gathering, we're gathering information about, you know, cost of materials and labor. Uh we've got a really rock solid design. We discussed positioning it, like where we'd like to put it to utilize really kind of tracking the sun throughout the day, so it gets the most light um through the sides of the structure. There's like a little cupola top, you know, in a sugar house, how you've got the, I don't know the correct terminology for it, but when you open the door, the windows to let the steam out. So we would have a window up in that area for more lighting in there. Yeah, and uh I think Laura was going to find out about electricity, um because we did discuss the possibility of some radiant sort of heating that might require a little bit of electric, but maybe not. Um so we're still in a planning phases. Um that's that's my update, other than to let you know that we, the town of Middletown has decided to hold off on ARPA funding for now until they make sure they have enough for the town building. Um and F F E does not want to apply for any grants until we have your permission to build because, you know, grants take even more energy and effort than the research and design that we've put in it so far. So um that's where we're at right now.
Any questions for us? Yeah, uh Ashley, are you looking for a motion to to for us to approve the building on it?
We're looking for permission to put the structure up at the school, because we can't, we can't move forward with anything else until we have your permission.
Same as the Green Mountain Timber frame that would be building it?
They won't be building the entire structure, no, they will participate in manufacturing. You know, the posts that have to go up, making it so that it all comes together in a style. I'm, I don't know that they will volunteer as much time as necessary to put it up. But again, we're still, we're still reaching out and talking to people reasons to. You know, to figure out where we're going from here, but the fact that they've even volunteered to do that much is huge. And then there are plenty of people in town. When Green Mountain Timber frame was, before it was Luke Larson's business, you know, there's plenty of people that have worked with Luke and. McKean to put the structure up. So no, they would not be the sole builders of it, it's gonna, it's gonna take a village to put it up. And we're still researching, we're like, we're still putting our feelers out there to see. You know, who would be available, but without a timeline of when we can do things, that makes it more difficult to solidify who's gonna help us because. Just figure out who's gonna help and what their time is.
But my big question is where is a bike to be sighted on the property? And what will you know?
Well, where it is sighted is behind the, um, there's a sledding hill behind the multipurpose room. So it would go at the bottom of that hill, but not where the kids sled off to the side. Behind where one of the soccer goals are, there's a section there where it fits nicely without impeding. The students' ability to continue utilizing all that space for their recreational activities.
It's where the swing set used to be, right?
Kind of, so like if we were gonna turn it not to utilize as much natural, it would be where the swing set was, yes. But we're gonna turn it a different direction. So it's essentially where that was, but instead of it going this way, like the swing set did, it's gonna move this way. Perpendicular to where the swing set was instead of parallel.
So it comes out farther from the tree line, so you can actually get sun part of the day.
Yeah, yes, that's the whole purpose is that it follows the, it tracks the sun, how it, how it moves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Really, my last question. Oh, right. Think this, I think this would be great. School endeavor, be a good opportunity for students. I just, you know, my concerns are, you know, essentially just around liability. You know, anything that's being built on school property is essentially the school is liable for. And so, uh, I guess. You know, my thought would be to have at least a sort of a plan so that if. And I'm not entirely sure how this would work, but. Usually when we have stuff built on the school property, it's usually done by the school, the district, I should say. And so that way, everything is done to code. And that's why, and I kind of asked about. How people are gonna be framing it and, you know, so that's kind of where I'm at, I hope. Wonder anyone else?
I will say that anyone who was participating in the building of the structure isn't gonna be just a, you know, parent who does carpentry around their house. Everyone who is invested in this project currently works as a carpenter and is like, that's their profession. That's what they file their taxes as, they're self-employed carpenters who have businesses that they're doing, so they have a reputation. You know, for, for their building abilities. I mean, if that helps quell anything, if we need to have, you know, forms sent out or whatever that shows, look. They have their own liability insurance for the work that they do. Testimonials that they've done great work for us, I mean. One of the parents actually did work on the school already. So I hear what you're saying loud and clear, so hopefully that helps feel a little bit better about the construction end of things.
And that, back to the drawing, I know you said before, but was that done by a licensed architect?
Yes.
So we do get some assurance from that.
And you said it was Michael Beatty, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are we seriously considering building a structure for an outdoor classroom?
Yeah.
You're gonna build something for an outdoor classroom, have you? Both of what outdoor classrooms are, they're outside, not inside, that's the term, outdoors. I spent a few hours today scrolling through looking at outdoor classrooms and now one of them, I think, is structured and built.
There are numerous outdoor classrooms that have a roof over top and the purpose of that is to make it so. Teachers can utilize an outside classroom even during inclement weather. It makes it more user friendly and also creates another outdoor structure that teachers can use because we currently have benches and whatnot. That one class could use, and here's another structured area that maybe they need some sort of roofing over, I mean, it's. And the idea is that it's not just like other community members could use it, so like. I could maybe sign up with the school to have a birthday party there and I've got the structure that I can hang out under or. Somebody needs a break on the playground from the sun, so they go and they sit underneath the structure, it's. There are numerous outdoor classrooms that have some sort of roofing structure, they're not all just benches or, you know, wood in the round. Putting a circle around a wood fire.
That's called a devo and shelter from a tree. If it's gonna rain in climate weather, you really shouldn't have kids running around on somebody's. I mean, it's an outdoor structure, your money should be spent on putting in. Structures that are like wood paths, areas where they can do things outside, not underneath the building. If you want an outdoor structure where it's got free air, open windows to gym, build a wonderful gym. Open the doors, I mean, this is really, really filthy.
It's not the same as being outside surrounded by the elements, it's just not, there's no comparison. I teach at the school, I open the windows when I'm inside, it's not the same as sitting outside, it's just not. And I hear what you're saying about investing our money in something else, but we're not asking you for money. We're using our own money, grants, fundraising that we've done, we're just asking for your permission to put it up. So I, I love your comment about using our money to do other things, it's a, it's a good, very good point, and maybe that's what we'll do. After we've had the chance to put up this structure, but I disagree with you that. Something negative about an outdoor structure that has a roof on top of it.
Yeah, so, so. You know, Ashley's here tonight again to ask. They can, basically this asks her to build, permission to build the outdoor classroom. And, you know, the reason why behind it, I think, you know. Is, uh. Is one that we can discuss, but I don't think, you know. There's a lot of reasons. I understand have to have it and not, but, uh, so. And so, you know, back to that question. Of having the outdoor classroom, giving the, them permission to build.
Eric, would you mind sharing your screen just because it makes my screen look funky, sorry.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to share the.
Thank you for that.
The drawing that she had, that's the only way I could present it, so I guess. But. And that was, uh, it's something I asked about too, what the structure would look like. So, you know, thanks for sending that, Ashley.
So are you looking for a motion around this time, or are you looking to table for further discussion or?
Well, we're discussing it. If no one has any, any other questions for Ashley in regards to the information provided or any official information. Just, just wanted to comment, I did share like other schools, I tried to grade it, I was starting classroom, it's been here for five years. But some type of covered structure, so it is out there, so. Oh yeah, you know, and like I said earlier. You know, I think this, this, this outdoor structure. There's a chance, opportunity to, for students. You know, whether to be, uh, to get outside more or to create other opportunities. You know, I think that's great, honestly. And. I do, but again, I, my thought on this is that. If we. Approve the building of it, we really need to have some sort of plan in place. My thought on timing and the construction aspects of it. And, yeah, and again, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming.
Is that a role that the facilities committee could play?
I think so.
Logistically, if we were to approve the general idea of moving forward with citing a structure of some sort. We could then task the facilities committee for maintenance and tracking liability certificates and. The credentials of the designer and the credentials of the builders. So that it doesn't necessarily have to become a, a full board issue. And they could perhaps be more responsive than we can. To the step-by-step process of actually constructing, constructing said structure. The facilities committee was established before my time, so I don't, I'm not 100% sure on their scope.
Yeah. Essentially, the facilities committee. Yeah, just covers the aspects of, you know, what projects to be done, what's coming up. So I think that would fall within the scope as far as, you know, information, but the board ultimately has the authority to say. Yes, this structure is going to be built. And the responsibility, but the committee itself really doesn't have any. My thought, real authority to say. So I guess like the legal aspects of building this, you know. So I don't.
So Eric, they're making sure upon an advisory role to report back to the board. For the progress, which would be, where it feels unsatisfactory, because I know what you're saying about make sure that. The structure to be built to code and how it's used, are going to prove, that could be something that the. So it's maybe, you know, oversee then to report back to the board with regards to that, but the board can then score on that.
Yeah. And, you know, again, if. If the board approves building a structure. And there's, there's really just no, I don't know, I, no details of place as far as like when it's gonna be built. And all the necessary stuff that goes involved, you know, because I would imagine that it's gonna take. You know, equipment needs to be brought in, so, you know, I do see that. There's a, an oversee role with the facilities committee, but we do have a facilities director too. That would need to be involved, but I just. You know, my thought is, I don't know what to tell this, but. If we say this night that, you know, we'll approve it, you know, as long as it's built to code and. Use code to prove materials and such. How do we make sure about that?
I do think Scott, so the director, we're mostly just work passionately and what else is. Start with that would satisfy that requirement, but that's important. As the board asserts that that is its stance, I do know that our attorney did stress also that's the. Upon completion of structure, structure can be turned over to the school board and school, you know, for. You know, I know the pastor you mentioned before about maybe to plan a birthday party, maybe that would be something that would drive a community use of. A school facility that the school would then govern use and monitor so that, you know, so that structure would be turned over to the school, the school. Our attorney did discuss that, so it would, it would have to be like a joint and shared thing.
And then I guess to kind of bounce off Chris, I was, I was going to mention our community use of schools, the policy that we have, but. Also, if we build this in 2023 and in 2025, the roof needs to be repaired. Who pays for the roof repairs or like, is that something that you and your team would continue maintenance for X number of years or would then. Somebody come to the board and expect that the school.
So, Amanda, if the bonds, if we just take the structure, they would turn it over to us, and I mean, would that. School, they have a structure for making setup to that structure, not all of that, they would build the initial structure to then turn it over to us, then. If you are responsible then just to make sure that's, that's set, made something, whoever that may be.
It would become part of our facilities to then maintain upon completion.
That's correct.
I guess my question for Ashley as a representative, like, does that kind of request match your understanding? Of your group that like, once it's completed, we would own it and take responsibility for it or like. Did your group have a different vision just to make sure that we have the same visions before we make a motion?
No, I mean, the FFE has trying for decades essentially to put up an outdoor classroom, so. And we have a separate savings account that, you know, people make donations specifically for the outdoor classroom, so. And it's my understanding through our group that we're committed to, you know, we're committed to this structure. It's not something that we have discussed. Beyond the immediate, but it is something that we can discuss, but like I'd say, this has been something that members of the FFE have wanted for decades. So I don't see that, that commitment to the building changing once the building gets put up. Because it's.
But your group wouldn't be opposed to us taking over ownership and maintenance once it's constructed and it becomes part of the school. Facilities.
I don't think so, but I can't speak on behalf of the entire organization because I'm just one member.
Okay.
I will bring that up at our next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I, I think that requirement is, is kind of non-negotiable because it is on school property, we'd be legally responsible for it.
Yeah.
As far. As far as helping with liability goes, and I like the drawing, but. If it's by a licensed architect, we need specifics in there like the size of the lumber. Information about the footings and things like that, and then. Your group and our group, the school district depends on that design, that's what we get by having a licensed architect do that. So that, that's something you would have to add as well, but in general, if those two things happen, I, I'm for it.
Um, yes, like I, I don't think that you would have a problem, you know, that that non-negotiable thing, I'm just saying that. Financially, in the future, if the roof needs to be fixed, the FFE might have money in their savings account that's specific to the outdoor classroom. To help facilitate that process, that's, that's essentially what I was saying. Yes, I understand you need more detailed drawings, but like I say, we haven't really gone full bore with this because we're just.
You can't apply for grants until we tell you yes.
Effort, until we know that it's, it's, we're gonna get something from the, from our time and there's an effort that we're investing in it.
Well, I, I'm speaking out loud, the board would have to decide, but we need that in a permanent place that it becomes, you know, property of the school district.
in a permanent place, that it comes, you know, property of the school district, a detailed drawing by an architect, and maybe just a little sketch where it's going to be cited, that might be enough to get it going.
I guess my last question, Ashley, is, did your, was there any discussion in your group around this being like a strictly Middletown use structure, or like Wells is also, I mean, I guess, once it's the schools, it's kind of up to the school, but is your group aware that potentially Wells students will be also going some kind of schedule or something?
No, we're definitely aware of that, and it's, and that's, that's great. I, I go back to the, to the, if it's the FFE that's getting the grant money for Middletown, while I understand we're a larger school district, I would always hope, as a member of the FFE who's done the groundwork to make this happen, and a parent of a child at Middletown Springs, that if, you know, if there's a conflict that perhaps, and, and maybe I'm not allowed to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, and I don't mean to be rude when I say this, but I would hope that the Middletown teacher, whatever, would have first choice if there was a conflict between Middletown and Wells needing to use it on the same day. But of course, we're not opposed to Wells students utilizing outdoor classroom, we want kids to get outside, so if Wells is going to use it, awesome, it's going to get used, so that's, that's great. It's like a bonus that we know that there's another school that will utilize it as well.
Yeah, I think we touched on this last week too, building of administrators, but, but, yeah. I don't think that would be an issue at all. Essentially, Wells has an outdoor classroom as well, that could be going.
Children can go back.
Okay, so, I don't know, you know, we did, having this discussion, you know, you know, potentially we could, I don't know what, this is kind of my thought, you know, I really almost want to proceed, but, you know, we could, we could grant permission, you know, upon certain requirements, that way it would allow you and then at that D to start working up a plan of action, and then, you know, that way, you know, we can, we can actually see, you know, have a better picture of, like, the absolute location, the complete layout, and as George said, you know, an architect, you know, with plans, so I think, you know, that's just my thought, I think that might be a good way to go to, because I didn't realize how much, you know, time and effort you and that he have, that he have to put into this, and I don't know if I missed that last find either, but I didn't know that, you know, it's kind of been something that you've been wanting to do for years, so I found that kind of interesting, so, plus, anyone else?
Yeah, me, I would, I would give it a go, I'd have if we had an agreement that we'll get, you know, the side drawing of the structure, site plan, and then an agreement, you know, in writing that it's going to be turned over once completed to the school district.
And just a logistical point, our next regular business meeting isn't until April, so just, I don't know when construction would want to begin or happen, but just, it'll actually be two full months before we meet again like this, right?
Mark seven.
Oh, oh, I was, I was counting our annual meeting as our meeting.
It's kind of weird, that's, but because of, because of that, we can follow up, correct?
There were you.
All right, so you're basically kind of set up, not having any kind of approval until, up until Friday.
Yeah, I would say if they could come back to our next meeting with those things, if that's not too soon for them to gather them, then at that point, I would be comfortable giving approval once we have that information in front of us.
Okay, all right. One else, Sue?
What do you want?
Because that's what your thoughts on?
I think this is open the can of work, you guys would want to open, so follow up later, and I, structure, built and built for an outdoor classroom, that comes up, comes to, what it's supposed to be, so, like, good.
Okay. Yeah, what I asked.
Correct.
So, I think that's a general consensus, so I think, the way it sounds to me, with, with, I guess, those certain requirements, come back in March, and most likely, you don't have that approval, if I'm not.
Would there be any interest in having or attending any of your boards of the community engagement?
Um, I don't think so, the community engagement committee, I mean, if anything, a facility would be more appropriate, but I was saying, I agree with what I've been, I don't know. All right. Thank you, Ashley.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks to Friends of Education, too, yes.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, move on, more not bringing to a call, so, I made a couple of adjustments on here, just in red, just like suggestions and discussions, the first one on seven was just outlining, highlights the policy deal, it's not actually adopted yet, but I did just put it in there, I'm a case holder. The other one was on nineteen, but what about our last discussion, as I was reading this, and the, you know, I thought, you know, just as I said before, with, you know, this, this document, you know, really, it's a collaborative piece of work that really should fit, you know, like everyone's being fortunate to operate, now the second line just kind of, really just kind of reiterates what the first line says, and I just wanted to, you know, just get everyone's thoughts on that, as far as like, potentially just striking out the last line, you know, it just seems kind of repetitive, but, but in more a specific way, and, you know, I can see that in some cases it might seem like, I know it's specific to a certain event, but, you know, anyway, that's just my thoughts, so. Got you.
I'm not too involved with striking out. I think there were a situation, or needed to be discussed further, we had these protocols and this other, obviously, that's not that same statement, so I don't think it needs to be that.
Yeah, George, I know this, I hear your language, originally, so, it's just, it's just a suggestion, so I'm not trying to dismiss it at all, just thought that it might read better, I know, I don't know if that makes more sense for you, Sue, as far as.
I kind of think, yeah, look at it this way, just to, you're saying, all decisions go in a three, reach, all members agree to support all board decisions, so, in one speech, we will seek decisions carried out. So if tonight everybody decides, well, we're going to go jump from meeting to meeting, do we have to carry it out, or can someone say, hey, no, this is kind of stupid? So, that's my theory on the whole thing, I don't even know why it's in here in the first place, because you're just telling everybody, everybody's going to agree to one thing, and that's it, nobody can have a question, and we all have to do everything, that's one mind, we're supposed to be a group of people to come together with different ideas and work out of that aspect, not everybody just agreeing with one person, other than that, then the rest of us can just be there here and decide, but, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
I think it's more like after we, after some voting on, and it's been our decision, then it is our respectful accountability to support the decision at the board, because we are only one person, I don't think it means with any discussion before voting.
But that still makes everybody, that's still for the one person and for the one person, making decision, that it's not agreed with everybody, I mean, there's no, there in the first place, if someone wants to add to something, you know, no, that's, that's not something that's, that's called.
Yeah, that's fine, well, my understanding of how this reads, that even when, when a motion is made, then we discuss it, and then we vote on it, those are the decisions that I think this, this line is referring to, and, you know, let's, let's bring up, you know, like, one of the most decisive decisions around man's, you know, split, you know, but, in the end, the decision that was made, you know, it was, it was upheld, and, you know, when it came to, you know, the board, it wasn't something that was, that consequently came up at meetings often, and, you know, I don't think this really speaks about personal opinion, or like, outside of, like, board, personal opinion, and like, no, I didn't agree with, you know, I voted no, I don't agree with that decision, I don't think it has anything to do with that, I think it just really stems around, like, if a board made a decision, someone actively going out there and trying to basically make it sound like the decision was bad, I think, correctly about wrong, that's kind of how I interpreted this whole situation, so, you know, and, you know, also actively working against, yeah, because.
Sue, do you think it would read better if it said, agree to support on final board decisions, or on board final decisions?
I don't think it should be there at all, both parties, and the senior board, it's not.
What if we?
It's literally made to be one opinion.
I don't think so, though, because we're all entitled to have our opinions, we're all able to vote no or vote yes, and if we vote no, we can still say, hey, here's why we voted no, but at the end of the day, we sit on the board that together make a decision that we respectfully agree to disagree in some situations.
But then you challenge that person, you have to go along with the one that's in the care, he spoke, that's not about.
What if we unstruck what's struck, and strike through what's not unstruck? So it just reads, board members will not block or obstruct, accomplish, or decision. And so it's less.
Not to go along with any praise on that at all.
Okay.
It's never been there before, it does not give you.
I like your idea, Matt.
I mean, it's straight.
So that it's not saying that you agree, it's just saying, if you disagree, you're not going to block or obstruct the decision.
It's not asking for support, it's not asking for support, it's just saying, you don't have to agree with it, but you can't block it or obstruct it.
Yeah, I like that.
It is.
Are we going to vote on this tonight, or is it, are we going to look at it again? Again, I feel like this is like the fourth or fifth time.
I think, fifth or sixth, maybe, no, I, I guess, I think it's like a work in progress. I had intended that we, we could work on it a little bit over the last few months, then adopt it at our organization meeting, like we do with other things like, you know, rubbish rules and ethics and all that stuff, so I figured that would be a good appropriate time, because the board should all be present at that meeting, too, so.
Well, just a comment, it's a living doctor, once we adopt it, it doesn't be a can't change in the future, that goes for any decision, maybe, someone can make sense of a change in a decision and convince the rest of the board, then decisions can, and we return or change, but it should be us doing the change.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's, that's tough, I mean, I was hoping I could come up with something like, you know, but.
I mean, if you made, you made that change, that you know, wants to have an uncrossed account, I would vote for it then.
Same.
Knowing that we could change this at any time in the future.
I would, too.
All right, so, well, we'll have this.
And I think, too, Eric.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll, I think the next version we'll see, I mean, it won't have any strikeouts, it won't have red, it's not well, yeah, yeah, it's pretty, I think it will be adopted, all right, well, I'm going to move this on, but, no, that's a good discussion. Okay, let's see, okay, the information file, so, it was, it was attached to, this was attached to my operating for the pause, but there's language in here that had drafted up after the last meeting, engagement meeting, I asked them if you would want to use it for the flyer, for the flyer that we had talked about in our last meeting, so, yeah, I think we'll have some commentary on that, was that, did that, should we do that?
Um, I made some changes, and then, with George, and George shared some changes, it's using a lot of the same information, but just rewording, and I don't know if it's in everybody's email, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, and then based on of the email, I just found one typo utilized either for future forward buildings, I X out that second four, and then I was sure about including in that second paragraph, even, even though there's a, you know, blank percent increase per pupil, there is still a decrease to taxpayers, I think that's the, that's the big point, right, it's like, yes, our budget is up, but based on the current information, the tax rate is down, and then at the end, I thought about maybe including something like, these were our next survey question, because we mentioned above thanking everybody for their participation, and you want me to read the whole thing?
I was just going to say, like, I don't know, you can read it, or I can read, I don't know if you have the same thing.
I just, I X out, I just wrote a couple of notes, but it's pretty much the same.
Okay, go ahead, read it, read it its entirety.
Okay, so, the title just says, Wells Springs Unified Union School District Board of Directors estimate a decrease to taxpayers on January 4th, 2023, the Wells Springs Unified Union School Board of Directors finalized a fiscally responsible school budget to present to taxpayers on the upcoming ballot, the decision includes maintaining existing services, the board also voted to propose a ballot measure to transfer a portion of our current surplus of $125,000 into the capital maintenance fund, these monies can be utilized either for future, future building projects, or to reduce future budget in order to hold down possible. or to reduce future budget in order to hold down possible tax increases. The current information from Vermont Legislature, subject to change. The board estimates, estimates the budget and capital maintenance fund will result in an overall decrease to taxpayers. And that's where I thought maybe we could get a little more information about the, the percentage if we felt that was necessary. Um, and then the final budget with the outcome of months of discussion and data collection. The board considered the rising cost of educating our students, areas where costs could be reduced. Opinions of the community who responded to our survey, the opinions of citizens who spoke at board meetings and the input of attendees at the most recent public budget forum. All community engagement was greatly, greatly appreciated and helped the board of forming a finalized school budget, including an overall decrease to taxpayers this year. We hope to have your support on the ballot this year. It will be available on March 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. To answer any further questions you may have, please support our budget. And then I thought, and watch for our next survey question in the comments.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, I think the emphasis on getting to the end of feeding the six three minutes order type of flyer itself.
There was one line that I would suggest taking out or giving Lewis's advice on how to modify, which was the, that like the capital stuff we're asking for now might reduce the budget in future. I feel like that's a very nuanced thing. And so I don't know as we want to put it like, oh, we're asking for money now, but we might be able to use it to drop the budget in the future. Like, do we need it now? Or are we using it as a payday for future, like, I think maybe take that sentence out.
I just felt like I, I agree. I just felt like if somebody were to say, well, what if you don't need that much money for building projects?
Then the response will be, we always need that much money. Have you seen our buildings?
Well.
Do you? Rocking it.
I mean, feel free to disagree with me, but that just like struck something that Lewis had said about it's not as simple as substituting X for Y in future budgets, so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Oh, is the third line in the second paragraph towards the end?
Change. Monies, we'd say these monies can be utilized for future building projects.
Just to be one more.
Oh, yeah.
It's the other one in the email.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
You normally put this together and what's yours?
So I meant you're looking for the streets actually here.
Yeah.
I mean, without actually typing it in, it just sounded like a lot. Um, I think, okay, if it's too big, it's getting rid of the picture. But that's just the, that's why I'm trying to have a supplier, this is a supplier for the. Yeah, uh, I think, uh, the, the part about the survey maybe take out because it appears survey. If we can fail to make a survey, we can move that. Uh, so I think, you know, it sounds good, but if we had like a survey every place.
Lock our hand, won't be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's something that if engagement needed to, but, uh, so.
This is something that, that, that you do, so goes to, goes to you then in the front row.
Yes, this year and then past, hope tonight.
My thought, Ray, is like, there's a lot of other photos. So I would be in favor of losing the photo on the opening page, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I think if, yeah, if you can get all the text in there.
Right.
And, uh, I, you know, I think we should just, we should just stick with the body of mind, we just kind of go. Talk about the rest of the fire all night. I think it's pretty much.
Yeah.
Already done, so they need, it's got to go out in print this week. So we need to make a decision tonight on this list.
Can we, could we? So give it up, and then there's the dimensions of that space. Could we, um, we maybe have like, you know, we, we vote on the language, like make a motion today and accept the language. But then maybe have the community engagement committee meets, have maybe potential emergency meeting to finalize any changes based on the spacing here.
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow.
I, I, I would say we just approve it tonight and then leave it to Lewis and one line.
I would give you that.
Because I think it would just be, we could fit it without the picture, for sure. I think it would just be, does it fit the picture? If not, does he have our permission to delete the picture?
I imagine.
But so, so it really be like, um, I think we would just have to approve the language and say, take out the picture.
Yeah, I would trust Lewis with matters of formatting and font, as long as we can agree to the content. Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess the only additive on there then is like that could be deleted is including the percentage, which mean if you could get rid of and the green, green lining, because that is included on the inside, correct?
Uh, it does talk about on, on the breaking side, um, the whole thing about the tax rate being down and, um, the 11 cents before the CLA. And then there is a chart of a bottom assured tax rate being flat. And I do talk about it more in my, my presentation as well.
Does it? Does it say? Does it say like the percentage of the budget is up? Yes, okay. Yeah, so I would say in that case, we can lose our wording of the first, yeah. So I would say we could lose our wording of the percentages because it's, it's already here. So that would lose two lines, cross out all that red.
You wanted to circle it, I mean, I could see what I could fit and then like the end of it.
And then I think the rest is shit. Ish. There's a lot of lines in that.
Yeah. I, I think it looks pretty good, so, uh, and, all right, we're all kind of sharing the document here, but, uh, so, sure, here.
Well, I, I have the draft in email, so.
Okay, yeah, so I didn't talk about removing, uh, let's not even, so. Okay, yeah, and. Yeah, I think this looks good.
We, uh, sorry, so there's a panel which I've been with. Could we also hack this out and perform same, same works and vote on that? Or that's what makes me.
So, yeah, we could do, we could use the same exact language. So, uh, I'll be posting, uh, something on reporting by front porch forum. And so, you know, the, the, the client uses language in there. Because it's, I, if, but front porch forum, there's some formatting issues. You can't copy paste somewhere there for that.
Yeah, all the features.
So the best way to get the warning on front porch forum is just the capital link. So this would, this would be great to have it in there, then have a link for the warning to keep people aware. So, um, we'll keep that. We, we thought our person, I would make one for the forums for our person. Yeah, put them in the hot list and then ten for the suit. So, oh, good, fire, uh, it's a full book. So we could, if you, if you're going to start a forum, start a forum, have a link for the website for the app. It's all of our, each video, big booklet, big booklet, fire, kind of any other budget information. But what is that going to be done with? Because I see there's placeholders in there, whatever I click on here. These presentations are on the final yet, so the final one will appear. The booklet just went to the printer, I need today, so that I'll be updating it. It has last. Yeah, last year's, all that back to the first day. A lot of stuff.
Probably if you have electronic, right, paper body.
For this wording, please. Off, I.
I'm good with this being, I'm willing. I'm good with this being there on the website, but I also think maybe it should be in front of the center, in front of the forum as well. Because you're going to lose people who aren't, who don't care. Find that in the.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, all right. So first of all, language, uh, any other special change that's off the light?
I was just going to say. There are articles coming up in Carol to this week around our budget that hopefully a lot of people read as well. I don't know if you've had a chance to see that or not, but it's a pretty respectful article around the Carol that hopefully also got the same message, so there is that option too.
What's that?
What?
Optional, that's.
Like for, for people to get the information, well, I guess it's not, yeah.
All right, so, uh, it's a screen of our times where everyone's on the same page. Um, and it's happening with language and click.
January fourth, 2023, the Wellspring Unified Union School District Board of Directors finalized a fiscally responsible school budget to prevent the taxpayers on the upcoming ballot. The decision includes maintaining existing services. Board also voted to propose a valid measure to transfer a portion of our current surplus of 129,000 into the capital maintenance fund for future building problems. With current information from the Vermont Legislature, subject to change, the board estimates the budget and capital maintenance fund will result in an overall decrease to taxpayers this year. The final budget with the outcome of months of discussion and data collection. The board considered the rising cost of educating our students, areas where costs could be reduced. The opinions of the community who responded to our survey, input from citizens who spoke at board meetings, input from our recent public budget forum. All community engagement was greatly appreciated and helped the board in formulating the finalized school budget, including an overall decrease to taxpayers this year. We hope to have your support on the ballot this year and will also be available on March 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM to answer any further questions you may have. Support our budget, please support our budget. Yeah, no, I think that's good.
All right. I think we could prove that and then. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, my.
Hi.
All right, everybody carries, all right. And, uh, and then as far as you, it's like a front porch forum on. All right, all right, thanks everyone.
Give me.
All right, all right, so we're going to move on to Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education. Um, so I invited Laura here to talk about this. Uh, Laura, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and I know we're into hour two, so I will try and be as brief as possible. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a Middletown Springs resident. I'm a mother of four children and I'm a registered nurse. So I preface everything I say to share with you that I have no conflict of interest, financial or otherwise, in my advocacy. As a nurse and a mother of children, my goal is to help facilitate practices for children that are informed by independent, that means not industry funded, research. And the reason I do disclose this information at the beginning of the meeting is that there are many instances, unfortunately, when industry does indeed, um, have a business agenda behind what they're advocating for when they come to schools. But going back to talking to you about what is the Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education? Because I'm advocating for research informed practice, um, over the past two years, I was contacting different elected officials to ask for funding for opportunities for the creation of outdoor spaces, outdoor learning. So a few people responded in the legislature. One of them was Senator Andrew Perchlik from Washington County. He, at the time, was on the Education Committee. He is now on the Appropriations Committee. He encouraged me to create a Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education so that when legislators who are in favor of this bring it to a vote, bring it to the floor, they can show indeed that there is support to provide government funding for such a measure. So my request tonight is to ask you, the school board, to make a motion to vote to endorse and support this coalition. The goal of the coalition simply is to ask for the government to fund schools who are ready to, not as a mandate, but for schools that would like to enhance and create outdoor learning opportunities, um, that there are the finances to do so. The word equitable is very key in this coalition. Why? Because I can tell you right now that the wealthy school districts, the wealthy schools throughout our state and throughout the country in Vermont, um, have already gone ahead and fundraised the money that they needed to create their outdoor learning structures, to create the professional development opportunities for the teachers and staff. And they're up and running, where schools that are interested in doing it are still scrambling and waiting to find the funding. Right now, if you want to go look, Lincoln, Vermont, Rochester and Waitsfield are just three examples of schools, elementary schools, that have their outdoor classroom programs up and running. So the other members so far of the coalition, um, again, this is just me as a mom, as a volunteer advocate creating this. So I, I have, because I'm not industry funded, I don't have the resources to do everything I'd like. But so far, we have New Village Farm and Crow's Path, Timber Frames, Friends for Education and Theater in the Woods. Those are the current members of the Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education. New Village Farm and Crow's Path are two, um, outdoor learning content experts that currently provide outdoor learning programming. So to give just a brief overview, I know everybody is very aware of outdoor learning, but I just want to remind and loop back to what Principal Beal had said at the beginning of the meeting. Fundamentally, children learn well when something is joyful. And we do know that taking children outdoors to learn is a joyful way of learning. But more than that, and I'm not sure if that distributed yet, but this is absolutely not new. This is not experimental. There are decades, decades of independent, peer reviewed research that supports improved academics and improved mental health and social emotional learning. And improved mental health and social emotional learning for children when they have robust and regular opportunities to learn outside. So I think what's being passed around is. And I wanted to, because again, the peer reviewed research says that we all, adults and children, comprehend literature and reading better when we read something in a printed version. There's a lot of neuroscience to explain behind why that happens, and that's why I felt it was important to provide you all with copies of this of this article, which supports the statement I just made. So just so you know, the work that's done so far in terms of trying to onboard more support to provide funding. So that this is truly seen as something essential that all children can access. Since we, again, know from the decades of research, this is so helpful, so helpful for children. Last in December, I met with Burlington Education Staff for Senator Sanders. And this week I will be having a meeting with his D C staff to talk to them more about this. Because there is currently in the United States Senate, a bill that was introduced last year called the Living Schoolyards Act. This is an act which will provide funding anywhere between ten to fifty thousand dollars for each school in the country, K through twelve, that wants to put such programming in place. I also met with the staff of Senator Welch, and I have also provided Becca Ballant, our new Congresswoman, with a copy of this legislation, so she is up to speed. So. In summary, your support would be huge. You are our school board. You. I am so grateful and watching all of you here tonight, it's late, people have other home commitments, and I'm grateful that you are here. And in your support. In this coalition can really help make a statement so that when we are talking to people who are making decisions about how money is allocated. As I think I mentioned, Senator Perchlik is now on the Appropriations Committee. It really tells the story that people across the state are interested in this becoming something that is is fair and equitable, again, because we know the research supports it. Just today, and as you many, as many have seen, there was a new report released. Where psychiatrists, pediatric psychiatrists are talking about behavioral challenges and mental health challenges of of our children. And while outdoor space and using this tool of outdoor space is not the only solution, it certainly is one. That is not very expensive, but it gives a huge return on investment. So I think that is clearly a point today that we can leverage for why there's a level of urgency to fund and create these spaces as well. To help really just do what we, everything we can to support our children. So with that, I'll stay and welcome any of your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions?
If we were to make a motion in support of the organizations tonight, is there a suggested or preferred motion language?
That's a great question, because this is me, just like I said, with the with the names and signatures. So whether you provide a letter or whether you just say, yes, we can put your name on the list. Because any of that will then amplify our ability to go elsewhere to say. You know, if people see you saying, yes, we support this funding, more people will then come on board. So I suppose whatever whatever's easiest for you, whether it's a letter or a resolution, or just saying, yes, we support it, and yes, we endorse it. And then I can put the the school district's name on the on the list of supporters.
Question. So so. In supporting this, is it is it just essentially what you need or want from the board is just our name as a supporter of it? But there's no financial contributions that will be making it's more or less like, yeah, go for it kind of scenario here?
That's correct. Yes.
So so could we pass a motion potentially that was to say this Wellspring's board supports the Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education and its goals to. Further outdoor. Education. And would that suffice, or do you want to combat with wording that works for you?
I think that that sounds absolutely fine. I I think the, because there's such a short time in the legislature and. I I am trying to to build allies. So the the keep it simple is is fantastic. I think the most important is, yes, having your name, because again, simply, this is, the Vermont Coalition is not an entity. It's a it's a the list of 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 groups of professionals that would like to see this tool, which is a research informed tool to support our children, get funding. So both at the state and at the federal level. So. Yeah, even just your name or the statement that you just said is is fantastic.
So. So I'll make a motion to support the Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education and its goals to. Further outdoor. Learning. Okay, so maybe the motion that Wellspring supports Vermont Equitable Coalition and its goals for their. Outdoor education. Does that sound good? Yeah. Especially.
You may want to have exactly the wording on your name on, or you just change something. Doesn't end with, they change something, but they're saying what they have, your name is on something. So before you just go, okay, it sounds good. Yes, something that might be missed, what you want and what you.
But I think the motions, you know, also. Motion itself, we're not. Essentially by this motion, this is my understanding. This is what we support. But. She's right, I mean, should the goals change? You know, the Equitable Outdoor Coalition goals change. As as the goal are. We we sort of.
How about we just say. That we afford the importance or we understand the importance of outdoor education. And we support bringing outdoor education into our schools. And then we're not saying it directly that we follow, we're saying we understand the importance, we support the change, and when the time comes, we're open to discussion.
Well, you could also, if you wanted to own your own statement, because I absolutely understand that. What you're saying, you could say, we do support the state of Vermont, providing funding for opportunities for all children to have access to the benefits of time outdoors during the school day. And then that's that's your statement. It is informed by research, such as the document I just shared with you, and that is. Then I don't have to say you're a member, but I can provide your statement saying that that you support. The employment of this research informed tool. Which sort of goes back to what Kara was asking at the beginning. Does that, does that make sense? A sort of a way around that, that way, there's not the commitment of being under the title of this organization that one mom is coming to you with, saying that she has five names on a list. But that you you own the statement and it's just a letter. A document from you. But this essentially is that one that one statement, we we support this research informed practice of giving all children equitable access to to this tool.
I mean, Matt's motion is on the floor, but I would support either what Matt said or what Laura said of, rather than saying, we support the coalition, is that we support. The. Outdoor education. As a tool to support the health, well being and learning of children.
You say that again?
That we support outdoor education as a research based tool to support the health, well being and learning of children.
So I mean, we could essentially. Amend that motion. To say that, we could strike out and. If I can't write this down.
Can I just ask, can we can we take back an endorsement? So if Laura has in the far east goals like and like all of a sudden pivots, we can we can retract it if it comes to light. But essentially, it's, I don't think it's a big risk, just endorse it.
Oh, you, oh, your initial statement or.
Yeah, so again, again, it's on, yeah, I guess, again, like, yes, of course, like, there is risk involved. But unlikely in my mind, and then like, if it does, if it if she did happen to pivot the organization to something we didn't believe in, could we, could we then raise that and just remove our endorsement in a motion?
What if what if we specify their goal? Of obtaining the funds for equitable outdoor education. That's what we.
Yeah, I like that we use George's language or we amend. Yeah, my motion that George's language.
Yeah, so your your motion was Wellspring supports Equitable Coalition, it's goals for further outdoor education. And so the the best way to amend it would be to, you know, to strike out and add.
I think it should say supports the goal of enrolling. To obtain funds for, isn't you say supports them and not their goal, it's still at the same first statement.
We we support them.
Right. Right, then we're not, if, you know, months, years, whatever down the road, there's something that if we don't support, we're not saying we stand behind that, we're saying we stand behind their goal of achieving.
I'd like to link our this. Sort of supporting the coalition, but supporting the the outdoor education that rested it, I could right now pass it up.
Your kind of sense of.
Sure.
So Laura, is 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 the mission of the Vermont Coalition very similar to the D C Coalition that you also have?
Can you repeat that? What does that, the, you asked, is this related to the D C Coalition?
Mission for for this coalition that you said in there, Vermont, similar to the mission you had in the D C Coalition.
I'm sorry, the microphone isn't isn't finishing the end, just the end of your sentence, I'm sorry.
He was asking. He was asking if your mission in this coalition is the same as your mission in the D C Coalition.
I I suppose there shouldn't be a difference that, yes, as you know, I was in Washington, D C, where there is now a D C Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education. And the goal of that that group. Which has representation across the city is also to make sure that there is funding equitably for schools to to access this tool.
Right, and looking at the websites, or I mean, and I think clarification, majority of motion there, support. You know, here the D C Coalition states, Coalition continues to help schools citywide to obtain funding and resources and support the need in order to provide students with outdoor learning opportunities. I think if the motion was made around that, that's the board supports Vermont Coalition brought education, you know, to assist in obtaining funding, resources, or we need or surprise to the outdoor learning opportunity that they have to clarify. The mission, that's why I was asking if this Vermont mission, or the coalition is very similar to what you said there, I mean, that's what we're trying to get at, but worrying the D C is.
Sorry, what was that very last thing about about D C?
Do you like the wording used there?
Yes.
I think it says.
Yeah. If you like the wording that's on the the D C Coalition website, that's great. I didn't write it, but interestingly, the Washington, D C State Board of Education is is one of the full on members of of that of that coalition. That sort of has has taken a leadership role in in pushing the mayor of D C. She, the coalition got the mayor to give about eight or nine million dollars in the last school year to to outdoor funding. And then sadly, for the following year, there wasn't, there wasn't money in the budget, but they are still trying. You know, with different variables, they don't have weather as a variable or a challenge, they have other, they have other challenges. But if you like their wording, then I copy, copy that absolutely.
Pat, would you be in favor of that?
Yes.
I think that's a safer statement.
All right. All right, so. All right, that's fine, so. So like, I guess could be the Wellspring, you could buy you this loser. I want to support some Vermont. Coalition for Equitable Education. And as they support our schools and retaining funding, resources, and supporting the need in order to provide our students with outdoor learning opportunities. That arrows to focus that that is what we are supporting, that there was a shift in the mission or change that our. Our support improved, we're in terms of we haven't supported that, we're on reviews, also, everyone is discussing the part, but if it goes somewhere else, then. My support is clearly identified, it's just that. That it makes sense, all right. All right, someone like will make a motion to amend Matt's motion. Say that. I'll make that. Do not announce. All right. Motion by George. And we are. Voting to. Basically to amend Matt's motion to say that new language. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, all right, motion carries, so now that we've amended that motion. Now we're going to. There's no other discussion on language. All those in favor of approving? That language. Let me say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? All right. What's that? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Vermont Coalition for Equitable Outdoor Education and support for our schools to obtain funding and necessary. Funding necessary. for funding necessary for the needs.
Seven? All right, motion carries. There you have it.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
If any of you would like to join me on February 13th for my outdoor meeting with our Lieutenant Governor, you may follow up with me and come on up. We're meeting at an outdoor farm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to policy. We have three policies after adoption, D1, F2, F21. We look for a motion to adopt these tonight. I'll make the motion to adopt the second. D1, F2, D1, F21. By George. All those in favor of adopting? D1, F2, F21, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have three other policy first reads, A1, D11, and D4. With D1, I think, George, we have, the policy committee have looked at D1 and thought that in regards to having timelines, our complaints, that setting a timeline, that there really shouldn't be a set timeline to teaching. So anyway, the language we came up with was appropriate to the issue and situation in regards to considering complaints. And then, yeah, D4, everything's highlighted in red. I think this is, you know, basically just kind of outline the definitions of volunteers. They can really clarify as well. Any discussion on the first reads? Okay. All right, so we do have an executive session. Personnel tonight. Do you have a second link? Is that on session? Okay. For those who are online, a pre-communal executive session. If you will come back to this link to finish off the meeting. So we look for a motion to move into executive session with personnel. Appreciate that motion. All right. All those in favor? We can do executive session at 8:45. Executive session at 8:45. Perfect motion.
To approve the stipend as discussed, Brian and Bree have.
I think it's been discussed. All those in favor? That's getting March 1st.
So just to clarify, our next business meeting, because March 1st is our annual meeting, our next business meeting is in April, correct?
It's March 8. We have two meetings in March. We have our annual meeting on the first, and then our meeting the 8th, right after election.
Okay, somehow I missed that, because it's not on the Gertu calendar, and I, I did not know that. Okay.
It's not on my Google Calendar.
Yeah, I think, I think that'll, it'll start to work this way. Yeah, right, you gain. And everyone's planning on being here on the first in person? Other blocks with business. Will be. To try that 8:42. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.